Hi, Doctor.
How are you?
Jason, can we virtual?
Yep.
Lynn, how is my tone? Busy?
Yeah. And you?
Always busy.
That's true, he's never home. That's true.
So Bob, you all set for tomorrow?
Oh, yeah. Yep. Oh, absolutely, a highlight of my day. Well, I guess it is. In some ways.
All right, so call us in order, roll call please.
Dr. Brenner?
Here.
Dr. Batula?
Here.
Dr. Pavilis?
Here.
Dr. Schumacher?
Here.
Mr. Sefner?
Here.
Ms. Shields?
Here.
Dr. Burke?
Here.
We just do the flag, the United States of America.
America.
The Republic.
We're all like. One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Someone made the mission statement?
Cultivating learners who have skills and experiences to enrich society.
And then add to student success, and then we have a YMS dual language grade eight graduate.
Yes, this was an item that we brought to the Board of Education Committee in March for consideration. We had an opportunity to take some feedback at that committee meeting and also have some more conversations and extended conversations with our current seventh grade dual language families and parents. We, after receiving that feedback, the administration is recommending the addition of a DLA, most language arts, Spanish language arts block to the grade eight dual language course offering. This is in addition to the social studies that will still be taught in Spanish next year and an elective option that is still scheduled for next year as well. There is some interest, I'll advise the board that there is some interest from the parent group about receiving dual credit or high school credit for the elective course itself. That is still needs to be under investigation because we do not offer that course at the high school at this point in time, therefore we would not be able to offer a high school credit unless we seek a waiver from ISPE. We will be researching and investigating whether or not the waiver would be possible for that particular course.
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, and add to summer school.
In this item, it's listed information you brought to the board last month. If the board would be so inclined after the discussion to do so, we would love for you to approve the 2021 summer program and staffing as presented. So we'll certainly, after Dr. Baughman goes through that, if you're willing to do that, we would help expedite the process.
So these programs which were previously outlined in original conversations earlier this spring would include the expansion of our 2019 summer school programs by adding five additional programs to help remediate learning loss. Those would be listed there as Rising Mathematician Program. That program would be an open enrollment program for students to give our math students exposure to next year's priority standards and curriculum. Also, a math boot camp, which would be a program that would be presented to offer remediation, skill catching students back up to current expectations. A junior box camp, which is for students with an IEP but would not qualify for the ESY Extended School Year program that we had offered in previous years. And also a combination of wellness activities that would take place over the summer to ensure that students' social, emotional needs are met prior to the beginning of next year. From a finance standpoint, this program would be almost double what we would spend in the current year. The financial information is provided. Our best estimates because many of the financial costs are based on enrollment. I'll also note.
I'll get ready in the morning, I wake up early anyway.
But I would also note for the board that attendance, particularly in the remedial programs that we're offering throughout the district is critical to remediate the effects of pandemic-related learning loss. And so we highly encourage our parents who, students need to participate in a remedial program, to attend. And we will place a special emphasis on program evaluation this year to determine the effectiveness of each and all of our activities. We have a team that has been tasked to work on the program evaluation component already. Again, like Dr. Schimpf had mentioned, this is something that we would like to seek approval this evening.
What is the communication going out to families, where are those targeted students based upon teacher recommendation, staff recommendation, when does that happen?
So pending approval tonight, that would happen by the end of next week, we would have our programs that would, we would send out direct invitations for those families that we're inviting to participate in our program. And also, as early as this week, we have built a website that is not public at this point in time, but we would be able to launch this week for the programs that families have opted to.
I'll make the motion to approve the 2021 summer school program and staffing. Second.
You'll just second the additional comments. Bob, I don't know if you want to comment. Nick, thank you for also taking some of my questions. I think anything you, anything we can do as a board to ensure particularly that the students that didn't meet that 70% threshold, that, you know, are able to, you know, to attend. We know this is fluid, we know if we have more demand than we need, the more, we want to make sure that they get the intervention in the summer and not wait till the fall because then that just puts them in a more challenging situation. So anything we can do to help, and that maybe we could continue to get updates of students that don't, are not attending, that have not met that 70% threshold. So there's other things we can do to support that effort. Does anything we can do this summer to get them to, to where they need to be for the falls? And I know everybody shares that same concern.
I think we'll provide an update each of the meetings as we, as we go through this moment next.
And I would just add that, it's very critical to encourage our families who are meeting that threshold because from a high school perspective, if students are down a path where they need to retake core classes, that could have a detrimental effect on our elective courses. So the student has to repeat a course required, that takes away an opportunity to participate in elective.
Well, and, and Dr. Bachmann, I absolutely agree with you that we need the, the increase in numbers. And I know you have explained that the funding for this obviously goes up, but a good portion of it is, is title money and other federal funds, am I correct?
Yes, that is, that is correct. The programs are offered, a combination of local funds through grant funding sources, and then you do have a couple of tuition-based programs that are involved in our summer course.
That's great.
And at the end of May, our summer school administrators will bring to the board the process that we're going to follow for the evaluation of our summer programming and timing for that.
All right, any additional comments? Roll call please. Mr. Pavilis?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Batula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Dr. Burke? Yes.
We have a few more updates that I'd like to provide under this committee if we can. One is just there is, as the board is aware, there's a mass vaccination for our high school students, 16, 18-year-olds that will be occurring on April 15th. Melinda, Heather and the team, and our Tonya have done a great job in planning for this. Winnie shared today that we also extended that invitation to Plano students. So she was on the conversation with the Plano students today. So just let the board know and thank Melinda and her team. I'm going to ask David to provide a graduation update and maybe a prom update too, but significantly a graduation as we get information that came to us this afternoon, just to hit the board. So you have an understanding of perspective.
Thank you, Dr. Schimpf. I just want to let everybody know, in terms of graduation, currently we're scheduled to go to NIU for graduation to do an endorsement. At 20%, 25% capacity, it gets us about 2250 in the, in the building, in the, in the.
Arena?
Arena, arena. However, we've been having conversations and they're, their health department is all tighter than ours in terms of some of the restricted pieces they're putting in place. The challenge for them is inside the arena, we can only put 350 graduates on the floor. No more. However, the problem is we have 450 graduates this year. So. But we can go to Husky Stadium and do our graduation on the football field outside ceremony to be a wonderful event. And we can go up to 6,400 attendees. So we go from 450 graduates having four tickets per graduate go to 10. The challenge of that is inclement weather, right, if it rains. So that's been a sticking point with NIU and myself, and then I talked to Dr. Schimpf over the weekend and we kind of talked through a little bit. We have, if we go to NIU outside and we get inclement weather, then Dr. Schimpf and I can make the decision whether to cancel or not. It's not going to be NIU, our big concern is that they're going to give us like, make the call on Tuesday if we're going to be, if we're going to cancel. However, if we do have inclement weather, we do have the following Friday as our backup. So if we, 21st, 6:30, we're outside, it's our night, we, NIU said it's our night, so it's whatever we decide, we can stay inside or not. If we have to stay inside right now, they are hopeful we get to 60% capacity, like after talking with them today. They absolutely believe that, that you can only put three, 350 on the floor, three feet apart, head to head. I don't agree with that, but I can't, you know, that's their decision, not mine. So that's where we're at with graduation. I think it's a, it's, it's going to be beautiful, it's a covered stage, the graduates will be on the field, we'll have full sound system, and then it'll be on their large jumbotron. So we'll be underneath the jumbotron, so it'll be a great event for our families. We just have that issue of inclement weather.
Is there a reason you can't put graduates off the floor?
We could.
There's plenty, there's plenty of room in there for all fans.
And I talked to him about that. However, then it cuts into the number of guests these graduate compatible, but it goes down to three, if, if that. And then the, the challenge for that is, as you guys know how it works, right? They'd actually be sitting behind, you know, with the audios, you know, how they set up the, you know, the guys who do all the technical stuff right behind the graduates. So to look out, they'd have to be up behind them. So I'm not sure our families would support that.
I would. Get away from it. Weather, do you ask people not to get back there? I mean, one for three.
It's early, I mean, still, it's still mid, May, right, May 20th.
May 21st is the night.
Yeah, it's early.
So we could get to, if it's, if it's bridge the. And I would say, until I came to Yorkville, this is the first time I've ever done an endorsement. I've always been outside, it's always been at the same time of year. So Plano, Oswego's, all, everybody's, Oswego's are going outside, they're going out there, all the other schools, we were going to be, I think, us and another school that's a little smaller than us, we're going to be the only schools that are going to be inside the house or the arena, whatever it's all. So my recommendation, and I share with Dr. Schimpf, as I said, we, we can go outside, we have both events, so we're inside or outside, doesn't matter. That's our night.
Is it the evening or, or the afternoon?
6:30.
What time?
6:30.
I know some of the Oswego's, I think they go Sunday, some of them do it in the afternoon.
Yeah. Now, we can again go on campus here, we could do what we did last year, that would still be if we go in cars. We still only buy four to five graduates in a car, we've talked about a pod concept, I'm not sure that's going to work, but we could try. But again, we start the same problem with inclement weather. And if I had inclement weather with a production company, our costs go pretty significantly because then I'm paying for a lot of the, we're going to pay twice.
It's the Saturday morning, or the Saturday is, or the Sunday, or those all, they're off there.
Yeah, everybody's booked, we still hold our night.
If, if we decide, let's say we tell them we're wanting to go outside on the 21st, when we get to that beach, can we change course and go inside if it looks like we're going to have a really bad week of weather?
According to what I've talked to today, it's our night, so we can decide.
So to me, it's right now, if we decide an outside ceremony with 10 tickets, we're going to need to know that if we get to Wednesday, that we can, it's falling for a double, a downfall, and we're going to move it inside and go down to three tickets. We just have to be.
Right, and I, I agree, I think we could do that, Dr. Schimpf, I think the two-fold problem is we're going to have to get tickets in advance. And once the tickets go out, there's, it's going to be a challenge for us to determine who's getting, how, if I give Dr. Schimpf 10 tickets. All right. Then we got three, Dr. Schimpf, who's going to, you know, and that's going to be hard for us to manage. I, I do think, you know. The other piece is we can bump to the following Friday. So it is, if we get in climate weather, the 21st is the washout. That was initial concern for, as I shared with that, my initial concern with that was, it didn't sound like we were getting a backup date, it was like rain, either rain or shine. But they said we can have the following Friday.
Does the same situation apply for the following Friday, if it's inclement weather on that day, we go back inside, is it available?
That would be, right now, we're the only game in town scheduled, we'll lose next.
Well, do you know, if it turns out that's the case, and we opt for the following weekend hoping for better weather, if it looks like that's not going to happen, we could reissue tickets for inside, we'd have some time to do that.
I'm not sure how that would work, but we could try. I, I think the challenge for us too is that we do bump, is that is more than we can. I love an outdoor ceremony, I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, if the weather's good, it'd be great.
And it'll be the year that I've, I've knocked on wood, if you're a fan. I've always been lucky and been able to been outside, and it's always worked out, but.
But a following weekend is a memorial day weekend, isn't it?
Yes. And, and I will, and, and for the board's understanding, I have not gotten a tremendous, like, groundswell of pushback from our families about the four tickets, we understand. So I have, I've not received one email from, from a parent.
Mr. Travis?
Yes, ma'am.
Wait, um, there has been some chatter, I'm just going to tell you on social media about all of these tickets and people are already starting to bargain with one another.
No.
And so I think that you only issue initially just the minimum number, the maximum that you, that you know we can have. So for whatever indoor, if you were saying only three, you can always give more, but you can never take them out of their hands. So, and I think, because you're going to have very, very angry families if you have people with tickets, grandmas are going to have them, whether you accept.
Oh, yeah, I agree with you. Hundred percent, and I, and I, I will tell you, I don't believe we're going to, they're not going to do a double setup like we would, like in the past, every school had been at, we would set up an indoor backup plan and then outdoor. They're not going to be able to do that for us. They're only going to be able, we'll have to make the decision sometime that week, if they're going to be inside or out. And if we're going out, we're going out. And if it doesn't work out, then we're going to have to punt to the following week.
But even indoors, we have to adhere to the distancing and mask wearing, which becomes a whole other set of issues that has to be managed.
Yeah.
I mean, I know it has to be managed outside, but it's a little.
Yeah.
Because you have enough space.
Yeah, they, they said that they're, certainly they've hosted some football games, the Tavua Geneva, they posted some stuff out there, and they said they've enabled it to be in capacity, and the family's been great. They will be very strict on the limit indoors. She was very clear with me today that it's, it's a hard 2250. We hit 2250, that includes us, that includes everybody. So once we hit that number, they're going to stop letting people in. And that's my only concern, when we start 450 graduates, you start putting some kids out, we could do a double ceremony if you want. I'm not sure I, I would endorse that, but, I mean, there's options for us, but to me, I, I, if, if the weather's great, it's going to be spectacular. If it's bad, but that's every outdoor graduation, it's bad weather. But we do have a backup plan at no cost. So it's no additional cost or not charging, and the elevated fees to be outside, if it was, it'd be quite a bit more than we're paying normally.
The board comfortable, the moving forward, the staying at NIU? We have to make sure obviously that we can fit all the kids in there.
We're going to stay inside?
If, well, as an option. Because if the weather's bad, we want to have the option to go inside.
Right, right.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's your best option, you know, changing the date to Memorial Day weekend is not going to be a wonderful idea. So hopefully, you're right, Mr. Travis, and we will have great weather, and I agree, it'll be a wonderful ceremony, but if not, the backup plan of indoors isn't such a bad thing. But I do definitely agree with Ashley that we should only give out the minimum number of tickets until we know for sure.
And the other piece is we'll have to make that decision prior to that day.
Right, right, but hopefully, you know, weather forecasting is good enough for three or four days.
We'll be fine.
Hopefully.
It's going to be great.
In terms of prom, we're doing a pop-up prom, that's the Saturday before. The pop-up prom concept is, we're going to move in groups of 50, throughout the building, there'll be various stations that our, our students will be coming through. And they'll have a, a station where they're going to have these, they call them photo booth things that your kids are really into, which I don't really know what they are, but they're kind of photo booth things, they have all these different backdrop to background. They're going to have an outdoor, was it called, they have an outdoor, outdoor what? An outdoor pop-up garden as they walk in, so a nice place for them to take pictures as they walk in. They'll go into the band room, they'll have these back photo drops, then they'll go into another room where they're going to make yard signs with their name on, and then we all put out a game farm road to commemorate all our seniors. Then they're going to go to a variety of different rooms, there'll be some dancing, there'll be some, a slow dancing place, a fast dancing place for 10 minutes, and then they're going to do a walk, like every kid, you know how we do our court, kind of does a, kind of a catwalk kind of thing. Every graduate that's, gets to do that, or every senior prom attendee will get to do that, and they'll be, they're going to put it on our streaming system. So it's going to be a pretty neat event, I just want you guys all to know that.
Can you model a walk till we get up?
I'm not going to pull on out. So, but I think it's going to be a great event, I compliment our students and Mr. Wyatt and our sponsors, have been really working hard to put together a really cool senior lift for our kids, under the conditions we have. So compliments to them, and I think it's a big, big.
And the board should have received some invites, please, to those that you took the attempt, so we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Travis, we dearly appreciate the effort to, to return to some sense of normalcy, this is an enormous milestone for the kids, so thank you.
Thank you. As a parent of a senior, this is great for these kids, thank you so much.
Thank you. And again, we'll keep you updated on any changes, hopefully we get 60% capacity and some.
Thank you.
And then this week, I know Lucas and David are orchestrating some, you know, four football signees, our seniors, we have, or, doesn't necessarily be seniors, but nine from South Country, and then three from Smugglesport, so. So pretty neat, special time for a lot of our, our students this time of year. And then I think that Baughman had some final comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to let the board know that the work of the transition committees has been continuing. So there are plans that are still being developed and edited and put in place that provides us with an opportunity to, to create some experiences for our kids for next year, in the immediate. While these transition teams are addressing the immediate issues that were presented to us through the pandemic, I did want to take the opportunity to remind the board and the community that we continue the work, that, that continue to keep in mind the work of the strategic plan and of Evolution 115 prior to the pandemic. And we still have a strong desire, I still have a strong desire to offer some non-traditional intermediate middle school programs for students that could include things like foreign languages, robotics, community partners, interdisciplinary units, STEM activities or stream activities. We still have a strong desire down the road to get to a place where we have middle and high school career pathway programs that provide students with opportunities to experience different occupational fields to help them make a, a very well-informed decision about the future occupation that they may have. We have not forgotten about the need to expand our preschool programming and also our full-day kindergarten programming, which was outlined as well, and to have a modern physical environment that promotes choice, flexibility, and high levels of, of student engagement. The, the teams will continue to analyze and evaluate the balance they're on school year. We are still working through some of the legal requirements about that as well. And so just a chance to remind the board and the community, it's still part of the vision, it's still part of our, our long-term plan, we have not forgotten about those things. And as we get to a point where our immediate needs are met, we will continue to focus on, on the work in those areas.
Dr. Bachmann, I'd like to thank you for bringing that up, that, you know, we're not all about the pandemic, that we're really about education, and we're looking to move forward in providing other opportunities for all of our students. So thank you very much for bringing that into the, the spotlight again.
Thank you. That, that's something, I know we've always talked about how proud we are of our staff this year, and I think we've able, we've been able to continue to do a lot of good things for kids this year because of the flexibility, the pro act, the planning, the support of the board, the vision of, of our, of our board, our administrators, our staff to get through this year. It hasn't just been about the pandemic. Yes, it's been harder, it's been really challenging with the pandemic, and our staff have done things that they've never been asked to do or never thought we'd have to do. But on top of that, they continue to provide opportunities and good things for kids. So again, as we've told you before, we appreciate that from all of you, as a board, your support. And we know we'll just engage in the form.
Excellent.
Yeah, and I think we all, I think we all witnessed some of the things and the disruptions that was going on, we had elections around us, the school board elections were contentious. There were a lot of upset parents, you had a lot of turnover, and we didn't have any of that here because we were all just focused on ensuring that the kids, the education, and so I think it's, it's everybody, it's, it's an entire community devoted to serving the kids. And then continuing to have this ability to live in the daddy's vision, so it's a collective effort.
I was at a meeting last Friday, and one of the construction guys who's working on the, the, the old jail, I was at the meeting and he started talking about, he said, the school district here has notifications throughout the state right now, he said, people that come to Kantic, we're talking about Yorkville, school district, that was really kind of cool, total outsider.
All right, anything else, then we can move on to operational excellence. Uh, we're, we have the student fee proposal for 21, 22.
Okay, I forgot to include it in the title, but this is just P A fees, and the only change that we're recommending is the addition of the technology fee to the first, second, and third grade. As we rolled out kind of earlier than, than planned, the one-to-one technology, so those fees will now be equivalent to fourth and fifth grade. So, and then for kindergartners, they're, they're using a different type of technology, so we will probably come back next year and try to make a decision as to what might make sense in terms of a fee and then what we might want to charge for the kindergarten level for this year. There is no fee being proposed for kindergarten, just one, just first and third grade.
Do you want to vote on this tonight, would that expedite anything for you?
If we could, that would be great, because I know.
Does anyone have an issue with that?
We're working on registration.
Yeah, I, I, the more we can get done to allow you to talk, and everyone's testing. So we could just have a motion.
I'll make the motion to adopt the student fee proposal for 2021, 22 school year. Second. Second.
Any additional comments? Roll call please.
Mr. Pavilis?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Batula? Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, and then we have the youth service contract extension for the FY 22 school year.
Okay, this one's slightly more complicated, so for this one, I think we should probably wait until the end of the month from an approval perspective, but I just wanted to kind of remind you where we've been and where we're going. But I just wanted to kind of remind you where we've been and where we're going. We did that at our February operational excellence meeting, talked about finally an extension, uh, with the USDA so that we could actually extend our food service con- contract one additional year. And that was really in anticipation of House Bill seventeen eighty-two, which will allow going forward, food service to be a request for proposal versus a, a true bid where we have to select the lowest bidder. So it will give us a lot more flexibility, uh, that our families have been asking for in terms of really looking at quality, um, as a key component of, uh, food service bid moving forward. So we did it after the February eighth meeting, we did apply for that waiver. And then what we're now coming back in, uh, in asking for is that the one-year contract extension is relatively standard. It's CPI is what the increase would be. Uh, this year, the food CPI with everything that's been going on with the pandemic is certainly higher than it's been in the past. But it's three point nine, uh, percent, which would be about thirty-five thousand dollars, um, additional next year that we would pay. So that's the one component. And then the second component is the, uh, minimum wage, uh, adjustment, which we've talked about for the past couple of years. And, uh, last year we had, um, accepted that, uh, from the airmark perspective. And I am recommending that, uh, we accept, uh, that again, as a reminder, when these contracts were bid, there was no knowledge that there was going to be, um, a minimum wage, uh, adjustment. And we got, uh, on January first of twenty twenty-two, the overall number dollar. So we would only pay that on any existing positions. And we've only paid that for that portion of time. And so we would get billed monthly on actuals if somebody leaves and they're replaced, we don't pay it. Um, so we're really highly structured in terms of the maximum cost would be about thirty-seven thousand dollars. But we would actually only get billed on actuals. So, um, in an effort to kind of continue partnership, airmarks been outstanding. We've had, you know, multiple methods that modalities that students have been in. Um, we asked them to do, you know, meals for, for families, you know, kind of here at the high school. So, um, from a partnership perspective, uh, we're recommending that we, just like we did last year, that we, um, approve that as part of the plan. The one piece that's not in this renewal is typically we also talk about the student, uh, lunch prices at the same time. But there's a tool, uh, that we have to use that helps us determine what those lunch prices need to be. That tool is not currently yet available for the FY twenty-two school year for the USDA. So that's something that once that tool became available, we would then come back and talk about the lunch prices to students, but this would just be the approval of the airmark, or not the approval, but the discussion of a one-year extension, which we would then come back at the end of the month. And, uh, it's possible for all approval.
Okay. So this is really nothing new, Mindy. This is what you've talked about before, so.
Yeah, well, it's, it's the actual kind of formalization of the action. Action piece of it, yeah, it's just a follow-on to what we discussed in February.
Okay.
You don't anticipate any changes in the prices, do you? Because these, I know there's been inflation in the sector.
Yeah, I mean, the, the interesting part is the last couple of years, if you remember, we were supposed to increase prices because there's sort of an expectation that we keep price increases, you know, relative to what we're being reimbursed from the program. Because of, um, how our program was run, we've been able to provide, uh, waivers and not have to increase the price. So we would hope, you know, in the event that a waiver is available, that's certainly something we could see. But we are a little bit behind. Every year we were supposed to be increasing by probably five to ten cents a year. And for the past two years, we, we've declined to take that increase. So the other thing that we'll need to consider is that, once we go out to bid, likely going forward, food service costs will go up, um, probably pretty dramatically. Regardless of the state of our current under, we'll have, so there's a lot of things that haven't been priced into that current contract. So, um, you know, right now, that program might be profitable, it might not be going forward. So I think that's something we, you know, could, could we take sort of incremental changes versus, you know, a, a more significant change, um, at that time. But that's something that we can discuss once we kind of run that, you know, once we kind of run that tool and, and, and talk to you guys about what we want to do.
Any other questions or comments?
No, it's clear.
Um, and then the COVID nineteen submitted up here?
So, uh, just wanted to provide a quick update regarding our COVID nineteen budget. Uh, last summer, when we started planning for this school year, we knew that in order to safely offer three different learning models to families, that we would have a significant amount of COVID nineteen-related expenses. So with that, we budgeted approximately one point four six million dollars in expenses that is related to the pandemic. And through March thirty-first, uh, we have spent about one point four eight million, or about twenty thousand dollars over what we initially budgeted back in September. Now, half of that one point four six million was allocated towards, uh, additional staff, like custodians, self-certification monitors, a part-time nurse, and additional tutoring hours for our remote learners. And we are well under budget in this area, and mostly because each of our schools have been able to, um, leverage, uh, existing staff, uh, to handle that additional workload. Same goes for our, our buildings and grounds department, so kudos to them. The other half of that budget, for about seven hundred and sixty thousand, went towards all of the additional services, supplies, and equipment uh, that we needed to help prevent the spread of COVID nineteen, as well as address a lot of those learning challenges throughout the year. Uh, so that included instructional software, mobile hotspots, P E E laptops, and UV disinfectant stations. Um, the district did, however, underestimate the rate, uh, in which, how fast we went through those masks, gowns, hand sanitizer, and other cleaning supplies. So in those areas, expenses were, uh, a lot higher than what we had initially anticipated back in September. So as we close out the school year and we begin to plan for a next school year, we're trying to find different ways to help fund a lot of these expenses um, by leveraging grants that have been passed by Congress in recent stimulus packages. So for example, uh, the First Cares Act, uh, that was released last July, uh, was for two hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. And it was, it was shared with several non-public schools, uh, in the area. And the district's share of that was two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. And that was used to cover a portion of our expenses, like keyboards, e-learning awards, cleaning supplies, ebooks, and our symptom, uh, tracking software, Qualtrics. Uh, and we have since received all two hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars of these funds from the state as reimbursement. Uh, the next grant that fell under that same initial Cares Act rollout, uh, was the Digital Divide Grant. And that grant is for three hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, and it's also shared with our non-public schools. Yorkville's, uh, portion of that is three hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. And that'll be used to cover additional laptops, mobile hotspots, and, uh, wireless network access points. Um, so Mr. Atkins and I are working on that application this week. We're gonna submit it this week. And he may bring a few of those expenses, uh, to the board next month for review. Last December, a second round of Cares Act funding was released in the amount of nine hundred and eighty-one thousand, and that is not shared with non-public schools. So that's all Yorkville's. Um, they will have a separate grant that they can leverage, um, for their non-public, uh, funds. So the, the second round of, uh, funding, uh, that grant is going to be used for reimbursement, both for expenses that we've already incurred, as well as future expenses, um, that relate to the learning loss for students as a result, as a result of the pandemic. So Ms. Bradford and I are currently working on that application, which we plan to submit very soon. More recently, the American Rescue Plan, uh, that was just passed by Congress, uh, a few weeks ago, actually, uh, that, that's going to provide the district approximately two point two million dollars. Um, these funds are also not shared with our non-public schools, so it's all going to Yorkville. And that's going to be used primarily to address, uh, like I mentioned earlier, the learning loss of, of our students as a result of the pandemic, uh, and focus on our upcoming summer school program, which we just approved earlier. Um, so that application for this American Rescue Plan is not available just yet. Uh, that's gonna come out in either June or July, but we've already begun to designate and tag certain expenses to be reimbursed and funded by this, uh, American Rescue Plan. Lastly, uh, we are working with the Illinois Emergency Management Agency to see how we can leverage potential funding from them to cover some of our P E E and cleaning supplies. Um, there's no set dollar amount from I E M A, um, but that really depends on what they determine to be an eligible expense. Uh, there's been some policy changes recently regarding that, that reimbursement, that funding, uh, based on the new administration. Um, and until those details are finalized, uh, we're gonna wait, uh, until those come out, and then we will submit an application accordingly. Uh, so overall, I think we've done a really great job to be, given all the uncertainty and given that we went, uh, to start with three, uh, learning models, to be only twenty thousand dollars within our, uh, budget, uh, I think is really, really great. And to be leveraging all of these different grants to cover not only what we spent, um, prior, but what we're going to spend in, in the next two, three years, uh, is, is really great. So, any questions, comments?
Um, in the, in the last, I've, I've been trying to keep up with, with all the literature around the last stimulus, um, funding two-two. Are they being specific about where that could be spent, or is it?
Correct.
Are they, I mean, are they targeting funds, or are they giving flexibility to districts to disperse that accordingly?
So there is some flexibility in there, but they do require twenty percent of that two point two million to be, uh, to address the learning loss for students. So that comes out to about four hundred and forty thousand dollars, which.
It has to go right to the classroom.
Correct, correct. And so we plan on, uh, working with Dr. Bachman, uh, regarding that summer school program to see, uh, what we can fund in that program.
And I think one of the, one of the challenges, you know, is that the assumption is that a lot of this would want to be spent on staff. However, we have to remember that if it's certified staff, we do have to pay an extra ten point five percent for the T R S on that. So, um, you know, we're gonna want to be strategic in terms of exactly what we use these funds on to, to maximize them. And I think the good part is that the, the last two have a much longer, um, timeframe over which they can be used. So, uh, the Pierce, Pierce, Pierce two is through the end of September of twenty-three. And then the other one is through the end of September of twenty-four. So I think if we look at our five-year plan, uh, you know, we'll want to make sure that, you know, one of the things I was on a webinar the other day, and, you know, the talk was, you know, making sure that you're not, you know, funding a bunch of stuff upfront that you then can't sustain. So that's something that, you know, we always think about in terms of our, our long-term plan. There will be even more, you know, critical as, as we think about how we spend, you know, how we spend these funds and whether it's on people or transportation. And we talked earlier about summer school, and that's something that, you know, we wanted to, uh, you know, in the past, sometimes we charge for transportation. But we really want to encourage kids to get there. So if transportation is something we could fund, and that'll end up with better attendance, then that's certainly a good use, you know, of these funds to, to kind of help close that gap. So, um, you know, we're continuing to get, we have lists every time we're meeting. When, um, we're doing kind of a quarterly budget reports with the principals and, you know, with the, the department, uh, the department chair people. And we're making sure that we're kind of getting that comprehensive list so that we can look at it from a cabinet level, you know, and then bring it back to the board and say, this is, this is how we think we want to spend these funds most effectively.
Any other questions for my committee?
No.
I know we have some basic board policy.
Yeah, these are just, uh, three policies that we will be putting on this plate at the next meeting at the end of the month. Uh, one is just a checklist for employment contract of the superintendent. Uh, when you look through that, you will see that, you know, the board adds the sort of the file, the things that are on the checklist. So I don't think you'll see anything there that you're surprised about, or that is absent of the conversations you've had, either with me or previous superintendents, um, or any future ones. Although, um, there's the sexual harassment grievance procedure that's been updated, um, and then a pandemic preparedness policy.
Yeah, and we, we do actually have a native policy around the superintendent review process.
Correct.
That is district-specific. So this is probably for guidance for districts that
Correct.
need guidance.
Or that are hiring a new superintendent and don't, right?
Okay, uh, committee information updates?
And then just, I want to let the board know, so at our next meeting is our annual reorganization meeting. Uh, I did send, uh, Dr. Burke's a copy of, of meeting dates, which I will also send to the rest of the board prior to that, so you can take a look at that. Um, and just to be thinking about, um, is there any links to meeting structure or times that the board wants to entertain? Um, obviously, we historically started at summer clock for both committees and, and, and board action meetings. But is that something that, um, the board wants to entertain a different conversation on, uh, moving forward? Um, as well as just for us to have an idea of, as things begin to open up a little bit more, is there a point in time where the board's gonna want to get back to committee structures, uh, as we have in the past? So this is something to get thoughtful over the next few weeks. And I'll be sure that Kathy sends you all of your draft of that calendar in advance to take a look at it.
Dr. Schend, if you could also solicit, and we will as well, uh, feedback from stakeholders internally, externally, on, on meeting times. We know a lot of staff stays.
Right, right.
For the meeting in, in a world of flexible work now, you know, would earlier times work better for our stakeholders? So I think we'd be interested in soliciting some of that feedback.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, we try to keep our meetings very, very efficient, but if we can get people home earlier. But we also don't want to exclude people because they, you know, traditionally, they work like, we used to have meetings at seven-thirty. Where it will be a little bit back, I mean, you know, couldn't think about six-thirty, you know, or would choose to put seven? So just if everyone could just solicit feedback, we appreciate it.
Yeah, we have to remember for, as the public starts to filter back the meetings too, you, you can't go too early.
Right. Right, it has to be at least after six.
Right, at least.
Many people work till six.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I have a couple, Dr. Bachman, I'll be with some permanent focus groups over the next week and a half. Uh, so I'll, we'll make that a part of the side conversation. Get your thoughts on it.
That's great.
We may want to continue to stream and report.
That was.
For later viewing as well.
Yeah.
And that way you provide more transparency and more access.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
That sounds great.
All right, and then moving on to community of learners, and we have facility operations temporary summer weekends.
Uh, good evening. Hello. Uh, every year at this time, we have summer help that we're preparing for, uh, the upcoming summer with the facility operation. Uh, we typically ask for twenty positions to be filled. These are primarily filled by eleven to twelve break students. We would like to ask to post the positions for these, uh, after this meeting, and then we'll bring it to the next meeting for approval.
Or do you just want to vote now, Trent? We can do that.
Um, it's not, it's not important. It's learned for. If you'd like to, you can.
We're here, we can. I said we do it.
Yeah.
Let's get a motion on the table, please.
Motion to approve the technology summer help as presented.
Second.
Move to second additional discussion?
That was a.
Sorry, sorry, facilities operation, maintenance staff. Sorry.
Any further comments? Uh, roll call, please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Papel?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Petula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes. Um, and we appreciate Heather, we also employ students in these positions. Cause I know it's, it's really wonderful to have an opportunity for students to work.
Right, and then Ryan, you have some technology temporary summer help.
Yeah, we actually, normally years past, we'd ask for two point five staff member, or two point five people to work the positions in the summer. This year, we're asking for four, uh, rather than a two point five, just due to the extra number of pro books that we're dealing with this year. And try to do everything, check back in and check through and ready for next school year.
Motion to approve the technology summer help as presented. Second.
Move to second additional comments? Roll call, please. Mr. Papel?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Petula?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes. And then we have the Yorkville 1155 book ambassador.
I'll ask Dr. Schim to speak to this one.
I am happy to speak to this. It's a wonderful proposal that was submitted by Seth McQ, one of our media specialists, a, at the core, a current book ambassador in her, not only in her profession, but as a hobby. And Seth presented this as a library role change for somebody. I assume Stephanie would apply to this once, if we get a board approval. But it's really looking at a restructuring. It would impact the district by a .5 position. So a .5 position would be the district book ambassador, the .5 would remain as a library media specialist. And on the second page, you see there's five bullet points towards, towards the second half of that page. Really trying to bring consistency across the district in terms of the book selections, in terms of experiences for kids throughout the year, diversifying our collections, making sure we're weeding out those books that are no longer relevant to us at this time, but also bringing in books of great diversity and, and that are relevant to the work that our staff are doing in the classrooms. Looking at PD for our staff, bringing in author visits, doing top hooks to teachers, to administrators, just bringing consistency across the district. So we're, we don't know where this is going to go. It could end up being something we come back a year from now and say, we'd like to add it to make it a full-time. We might say we have to look at other media specialist roles and change those to reflect something similar to our agenda. So it's, it's something that I'm excited about. I mean, it's, it's something that's needed across the district. And where it goes, I guess I'm asking for a little grace and flexibility to say, we'll bring updates throughout the year. But I believe it's a worthy investment for kids. You know, Steph talks about a proposal about the term innovation. And certainly, I believe, as Steph has alluded, that there is, there's a place for books in literacy and innovation. It's not just the wires of the technology that is so commonly become to be known as. So I really like the idea.
I love, I love.
And I think it's unique. It's, it's something that you don't see it very often. And, you know, we're trying to do things differently. And literacy and books will always have a place in our, in our district as long as I'm a superintendent and I can give us the board of that. So I would love to, the board support this. I'd like to bring it back and at the end of the month for approval, but open for discussion at times.
Well, and Steph always invites us, it also allows a larger stage to have these larger tops that, you know, you have national authors that also, you know, incredible learning experiences. And she was able to bring us to kids even in the most challenging times. And, you know, be able to survive in today's labor market, you have to read continuously. Read, read, read.
And as we talk about integrated units in coming school year in the ad, having, having someone that can help all of our media specialists and our staff use resources such as books to do that. We've talked about the work of our SEO, we've talked about Echo University. There needs to be greater emphasis on providing resources to our staff to support them to do that.
Yeah, not everything is on YouTube.
No.
Certainly not in the detail that it's required. So it's a great, great idea.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Then we have the Spanish translator and family outreach specialists.
Yes, and we've got Christine Lipkrot and Michael Camp to speak to this.
This position will address two growing district needs. The first is for translation and interpretation services. The district's number of non-native English speakers has risen 69% since 2017 to 734 of our students. And that would help meet this growing need for our families. In addition to outreach to our subgroups to help close the achievement gap, and that includes working with EPAC, which is our vibrant whole parent advisory council. This position is in line with the goals and the strategic plan. And it is primarily grant-funded through Title I Ever Student Success Act. Mike Camp and I are here, if you have any further questions.
No, this is something we should have did before. So it, it helps us, I think, meld all portions of this community into a more, a single-mindedness. And rather than having a more like a separate group that, that sometimes doesn't always feel as they're as big a part or they have as much decision-making as, as maybe they, we would like them to have. And obviously, communications major in the ad, and this will go a long way in helping that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, and then we have another question.
We're looking to add a vision itinerary teacher position. Now, this has been covered in the past by a outside contract service, which will no longer be available to us after the end of this year. Cost-wise, it's pretty much a wash, not a savings.
And then we also have hearing.
Hearing itinerary, we've had a number of students that are coming to our district now that have hearing services needs. So we'd like to increase it to a .8, to a 1.0. Keep in mind that Paysek is going to be picking up .3 of the FTE for services within their district. That would be brought back to the next meeting.
And then we have a middle school student services assistant.
Yes, we're looking to move the current position, which is a 215-day contract to a full 260-day. This, this particular position at the middle school has traditionally covered the extended school year, which involves about 20 days worth of work plus an additional stipend. It just provides us more flexibility within the school itself and provides support to parents and families during the summer months.
Any questions or comments? All right, and then we need an infinite visions of going onboarding system.
Yeah, we're really very excited about this in the HR department. That iVisions has finally upgraded some of the systems. This new package will allow us to handle a lot of documents electronically rather than having new staff members coming into the office and filling out paperwork in person. It also automatically loads all their information into iVisions, which would break and cut down on the amount of work by my assistant right now. Now, the, the cost that you see in there of the $27,000, there's about $10,000 of that that's actually a module that has to be added to the server just in order to be able to support the addition of packages such as this. So ongoing, if we look in the future to add some other productivity items to iVisions, that boss will already have it taken care of. The important part to note, after the initial cost, the annual maintenance is actually fairly, fairly low. We'll bring that back to the board.
So Troy, this allows, you're, you're going to be able to scan all the resumes and all of the certifications and how it's supposed to work chronically then?
We're actually going to be sent, pushing out essentially almost like a portal for the new staff members to complete all the paperwork, to complete I9s, to upload, or to upload driver's license.
Yeah.
So on and so forth. So it's going to be fully automated.
And then it has reporting capabilities? So it serves as a database where you can search and run reports and things like that?
Eventually, what would happen, and we're going to, this is, this is new for them. They're going to, so initially pushing out is going to be only to new staff. What we're going to ask them is how can we start moving our personnel files from our existing staff into the system? So we can start to eliminate our current, current picker system.
Any questions or comments?
Sure.
All right, and then any committee information or updates?
Just, but we had second round interviews with our project manager position. And so we'll vary that down and we'll be communicating and meeting with an individual later this week. So I hope to bring something back to the board for April 26th.
All right, on to new business, and we have some pro curricular hires. Need a motion?
Motion to approve the corporate. Second.
Move in second edition session. Roll call, please. Mr. Catholic?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katsula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes. Next, we have the superintendent of schools for the 2021 salary. Dr. Schim did not take a salary increase this past year. So this, well, it's not a full salary, a full year increase. And this is mainly due to the uncertainty with COVID and things like that. He opted to not go an increase. This at least adjusts his salary from January, which we discussed in the session. So we need a motion on the table.
Motion to approve the superintendent of schools 2020, 2021 salary as presented.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? A roll call, please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Catholic?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katsula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes. Then we have some resignations. So need a motion?
Motion to approve the resignation as presented. Second.
Move in second additional discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those? Motion to assess, if you can roll right here means on there. All right, we have transfers.
Motion to approve the transfers as presented. Second.
Second.
Move in second additional comments? We need a roll call, please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Catholic?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katsula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes. Then we have some summer school hires.
These are our summer school administrators or two preferers.
So need a motion?
Motion to approve the summer school hire as presented. Second.
Second.
Moved in second additional discussion. A roll call, please. Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Catholic?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katsula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields? Ms. Shields?
Yes, sorry. I'm sorry, yeah.
And Dr. Burke? Yes. All right, and then we have some additional hires.
Motion to approve the hires as presented. Second.
Moved in second additional discussion. Roll call, please. Mr. Catholic?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Katsula?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields? Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes. All right, and then any other additional updates? Otherwise, we're going to need a motion to go to closed session. Anything else? So Erie, could you read the motion to take this to the closed session?
I don't know what that means. Motion to move into executive session for the purpose of discussing appointment, employment compensation, discipline performance with dismissal of specific employees of the public body or legal counsel of the public body, including here in the testimony act, placing against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body, determined to live in 5 ILCS 120/2C1. The purchaser leased real property for the use of the public body, including meetings held for the purpose of discussion whether a particular parcel should be acquired, 5 ILCS 120/2C5, and the selection of a person to fill a public office, including a vacancy in a public office, 5 ILCS 120/2D.
Second.
Move in second and roll call, please. Dr. Katsula?
Yes.
Mr. Catholic?
Yes.
Dr. Brenner?
Yes.
Dr. Schumacher?
Yes.
Mr. Sefner?
Yes.
Ms. Shields?
Yes.
Yes.
We're going to close session here, so we'll take about a five-minute break.
How do you want to get us in that are online?
Yes.
We'll call you back separately, okay?
You're going to call? All right, so we'll just be on audio?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jason, we see you. Oh, there it is. Gotta move here. I think you're the only one. Oh, no, there's one attendee. Okay.
Hey, this will be my last time to have to worry about football. We're done after next week, so.
Big win. Big win with Oswego. Wow.
Yeah, that was nice. That was nice. That was nice. Yeah. Happy to see that. We finally got that one off our backs, so we can. I can drive through the west side of Oswego and get out of town on the west side and actually kind of puff my chest out for a couple months here instead of having to duck and cover like usual.
Okay, so Tom, take attendance, so we can.
Need a motion. Oh, we gotta.
You need a motion to open.
I'll make a motion to open. Second, second.
A roll call. Gary?
Yep.
Sean?
Yes.
Bob? Jason?
Yes.
Ashley? Dr. Burks?
Yes.
On favor side?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, can move motion to adjourn.
I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post? Adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, everybody. Bye, Ashley. Bye.
Good luck tomorrow, Bob.
Yeah. Good luck, Bob. One arm branded.
What time's your surgery?
Seven AM.
All right, we'll be thinking of you.
Good luck. Appreciate it.
Yep, hang in there. All right, bye-bye. Sold shoulder.